Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone tonight. We'll call the workshop to order. We call the roll, please.
Mr. Bachman?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman? And Stevens?
Here.
If we excuse Dennis until he arrives in a few minutes?
Second.
Motion to excuse Mr. Lieberman for the time being by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. He's, I'm assuming will be here soon.
Yeah.
Okay, so tonight's workshop discussion is revenue. So we'll turn that over to Mr. Schweitzer.
Evening. So I know you all received a copy of the presentation beforehand. So basically, it's just going over some of the two major revenue sources we have and the expenses and where we're projecting to be, and then also some scenarios as far as property taxes or income taxes, so.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah. You just, you just can't hear me. So you can see from the first slide, income taxes have been basically going up every year. 2020 took a hit with the pandemic, but we have seen, you know, regular increase in income taxes. And in 2022, we collected almost 5.5 million in income tax. In property taxes, it's a little different story. From 2017 to 2022, you know, it was really only about a hundred thousand dollar change from 2.3 million in 17 to 2.5 in 22. So the main cause is because those levies we have are maxed out. So when you, when you pass a property tax levy, they take the value, the assessed value of the, of the properties in the city times the mileage of the levy, and that's the most you're going to collect on that levy. So if property values go up, they use reduction factors to bring it back down. So you're still only collecting the max you can on that levy. So that's why we're pretty flat, because they're all, they're all maxed out. Looking at expenses, I have the general police, fire, EMS and service funds here, the four major funds we have. And you can see that expenses are going up each year, you know, the cost of personnel, insurance, and then, you know, the last couple of years, fuel, supplies, anything, you know, it's the cost of everything going up. And also with the general fund, we do have Meadowbrook in there. That's also all their expenses which exceed revenues. And this just kind, kind of gives you a little more graphic detail of how, how it works. And just to highlight the transfers from the general fund to the police, fire, EMS, service and debt service funds. You can see from 2017 to 22, majority of the time, they were kind of holding steady there at the beginning, but in the last couple of years, we've increased with the cost of everything going up. So, so that the transfers have been, have been going up each year. It did level off a little bit last year with the, the police and fire.
Where would Meadowbrook be at in that?
Meadowbrook is in the general fund, so there's no transfers to it. It's part of the general fund, so.
Okay.
I know since we've taken it over, you're looking at an average of about $210,000 loss each year with Meadowbrook. So if we take those revenue trends and expense trends, looking at where I budgeted us to end this year is at 1.9 million. If we use the same, the same trends and percentages, in the next year, we'll be at about 328,000. At the end of '25, we're at negative 848,000, and in 2026, we'll be about 1.7 million in negative. And one thing is, you know, we talked about, you know, trying to reduce expenses, which we do where we can. A lot of times, the thing is, well, we won't do any CIP projects. Well, the way our income tax monies are allocated per ballot language, two-thirds of the income tax go to the general fund and one-third goes to the construction in progress project fund. So even if we don't do the projects, the money's just going to accumulate in the CIP fund, so we can't transfer it back to the general fund. So it will just sit there, so it really doesn't, doesn't help us with our, our issue with the general fund. So looking at property taxes. So I kind of went through the calculations here, giving you the taxable value within the city that would be assessed, and then looking at 3.5 mils in the first, first area there, and doing a 95% collection, which is what the county generally sees when they collect the, the property taxes. So you'll see if you did a 3.5 mil levy, you'd collect $719,000. And that 110.25 is what it would be in addition for a hundred thousand dollar house. So then I went through other scenarios, you know, five mils would generate a little over a million, six and a half mils would give you 1.3 million, and eight mils would give you 1.6 million dollars.
Kevin, I have a question.
So you're on the, the price per hundred thousand dollar house?
Mm-hmm.
That's per year?
Yeah, that would be an increase, yeah. And just to give us a little bit of reference where we are at in our property tax rates compared to other cities around us, we're actually, which I thought was kind of surprising, we're actually towards the, the top end there at 13.78 currently, with this Dayton and Union Next slide I went to was, you know, trying to think, okay, well, we, I know we got new subdivisions being built, so what kind of income tax can we maybe anticipate from, from those new subdivisions? I didn't do any property tax calculation for this because all these are going to be in a TIF, so we would not be realizing any property taxes, so. So I used the U.S. Census median household income value of 79,987. So I took that times 0.75%, which is, you know, just saying, trying to be conservative, saying that they're working elsewhere, so they're going to get credit for 0.75, so the O is 0.75. So, so I kind of went through there by each subdivision, seeing what the potential income tax is. So Grand Traditions, we're looking at like 72,000, Hunter's Path, 75, Winger Village, 35,000, Northview State, 68, North Clayton, whatever that happens, you know, maybe 193, depending on what kind of apartment, single homes, whatever they come up with. So I was trying to give a, get an idea of, you know, if we did, didn't do anything, this is what we're looking at, so you'd probably be looking at about, you know, but.
Kevin, why do you use 0.75 instead of 1.5?
I was trying to be conservative, because 1.5 is our total tax rate, but if residents work outside the city and they work somewhere else, they're paying 1.5%, they get credit for 0.75. We have the 50% credit here, so I went with just a 0.75 that we'd be collecting, because I don't want to say we're going to be collecting the full tax rate from all these individuals. So then moving to an income tax levy. So right now, for residents at one and a half percent with a 50% credit, bringing in about 1.4 million currently. If we went to one and a half percent with, with 100% credit, it dropped to 491,000, so there's that, almost a million that we talked about when we made the, made the 50% credit go into effect. That's what we projected we'd be bringing in. So looking at different tax rates, at one, I went 1.75 to 2.25 and 2.5. I did these at 100% credit, because it was just still, you know, on Facebook again this week, people complained about this 50% credit, and I don't see it passing any kind of increase if you still had that 50% credit in there. So I took the credit out to see where we could stand at. So like at 1.75, you're looking at 722,000. Now, that's just the resident tax. If you go down below, you'll look and see employer withholdings where we, we generate a lot of income from. So you'd be looking at 4.3 million there. With the residence tax, we'd come up with about 5 million in taxes, which is pretty close to what we're, we're collecting now. So then as, as you go up, you know, at 2%, you're looking at almost 6 million, 2.25 would be almost 7, and 2.5 would be almost 8 million dollars. So, you know, and I put in that, you know, the increase is a different level, how much it'd bring in additional, but just trying to give you options as far as what property taxes would bring in, what income tax levies would bring in.
Kevin, do we know the percentage of residents who work in the city as well? Approximation?
They don't keep, they don't keep track of that. It's just, I mean, credit revenue versus just full tax revenue, it's all lumped together. They don't track anything like that. I've asked before, and they, it's just not something they do. There'd be a lot on the employers reporting that as well, and they just don't do that. Then, yeah.
So the two break evens then are the five mils would generate 1 million dollars extra, or the 2% income tax with one, with no credit would generate 1 million dollars.
Right. And then the difference, though, is property tax, that's all you'd ever collect additional the income taxes, but potential for growth.
What's the, so if we do a property tax, are we limited as to how that money can spend?
Yeah, usually you'll state in the, in the, in the ballot language what it's for. So I don't know if you guys want to either property tax or income tax, say it's for police, fire and street, or does police and fire, want to make it safety? And then you can also determine, you know, if it's going to be for five years, or it's just indefinite. So it's all the things we need to determine.
And I, and this is why I'm asking the question. And I could be completely wrong on this, but would we be able to transfer that to the general fund if it's like a police and fire levy? And if we can't, then how does that resolve our issue?
Well, currently, the, you know, like I said, we're doing all these transfers out of the general fund for the police, fire and street debt service, so unless you just went with the straight, you know, it's going to be used for police and fire, but, I mean, we, you could state that's for general fund, it'll be deposited in general fund, but most likely, it's going to go into the police fire, the police fund and fired, so.
So let me try to refine that question.
So, yeah, once it goes into those special revenue funds, you cannot transfer it back to the general fund.
Right.
So, but we'd be doing less transfers out of the general fund, because they're almost hopefully being self-supporting with this additional property or income tax.
Which is actually what I thought would happen, which surprises me that I actually had that right. But on the, on the issue of the general fund, do we transfer that much from the general fund that it would make us healthy again if we didn't have to do those transfers? Okay, we're, I guess I'm looking towards the future.
Yep. Let's go back to the transfers.
Because you know everybody's going to blame it on Meadowbrook, so.
Yeah, so here's, here's the transfers right here, so. So we, we did 2.8 million dollars worth of transfers last year. So that would stay in the general fund then, most likely. I mean, we'd have probably some for the debt service that we'd still have to take care of. So that would be helping our fund balance. I mean, instead of when, you know, next year at 300,000, we'd be, you know, at 3.1 million. So it does help it out, it does, yeah, it does constrain us on how we can use it, but you know, we're kind of, the, the property taxes, levies for the police and fire, like I said, they're maxed, so there's no new income coming in through that way. So, I mean, it would, it'd constrain you, but it'd be used for what we're telling the residents we're, we're posing the tax for, and it would help us out in the general fund as well.
All right, so on one hand, if we were to do it through the property tax, and if it got passed, then that would enable us to keep the money in our general fund that we've been giving to, to police, fire, et cetera. On the other hand, it is going to increase the property tax, not just by what we're doing, but, but why, but by Northmont, if Northmont gets.
Right.
Gets passed, which is going to be astronomical, isn't it? I mean, that, that's like.
Yeah, currently, out of all the property tax that people in Clayton pay, 65% is going to Northmont, and then 18% is going to the county, and we get, we get roughly 14%. So, yeah, Northmont's looking at a, you know, what, 7.8 mil in, you know, May, so there will be increases there. Or plus, if the county goes after anything, or the library, CTC.
So let's assume that passes, and people have just been hit by 7.8 mil. We're talking about putting another 5 mil on in November?
Yeah, yeah, timing's not good. If you look, I think every school district's got a big levy out there, and again, it falls back on the state, you know, like with Northmont, they've just said you're not getting any additional, it's flat funding, we're keeping the monies, I guess, filling up their rainy day fund.
Before we got, before they, before the state got rid of the local government fund, how much were we getting a year from that?
We still get, we get 200,000 from local government fund.
But what did it, it used to be higher?
Before we had, yeah, it was higher. We also got the estate tax. I mean, we are also, we were getting quite a bit of money from the state, and we're down to 200,000 now, so, yeah, it's just, I mean, I can make our general fund balance look good if I didn't pay bills like the state's done, but, you know.
And I feel like when I first got on council, we were getting closer to a million.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we were getting quite a bit.
And local government.
Yeah.
So that's 800,000 reduction, just from the state that they're not giving us anymore.
So that's one option.
Yeah, that's, that'd be tough, though, yeah.
The other option is we increase the income tax, and if we, if we do it with 100% credit, we have to go up to what, two or almost 2.25 to, to make ends meet? For the new, for the foreseeable future?
Yeah.
100% credit is only people that work in Clayton.
Right.
It's 100% credit, if anyone that worked anywhere to make an equal to, equal to our, our income tax rate, you know, so if somebody lived in Clayton and worked in Clayton, they're paying 2 point whatever, or whatever the rate is. Or if they worked in a township, they owe us the entire tax. But if somebody worked in Dayton, you know, they're paying, already paying 2.5, so they would get 100% credit, or Huber, wherever.
So like me?
Yeah.
I work in Dayton, so I wouldn't be giving you any money. I mean, that's, that's basically right.
Yeah, but then if you live, you know, worked in Union, it's, it's what, 1%? So you'd owe, you'd owe, you'd get credit for 1%, but you owe the additional back to the, the city, so that's how that would work.
But if we kept the 50%, the way it is, we wouldn't have to increase the income taxes much. Would that be correct?
Yeah, I just think.
And understand, I'm not advocating anything, I'm trying to get a feel for.
Right. Yeah, if you, if you wouldn't have to, yeah, because we're getting rid of the 50% credit at one and a half percent, that's, that's a million dollars. That's what I'm saying, though, you know, is looking at the, the complaints I've heard, and like I said, it's still out there. I don't know if it would, you know, it'd get passed.
Well, and that, that probably, probably what we have to decide is what's the best thing for the city, and then decide whether politically it's possible. So.
Yeah, like I said.
And then how to do it.
Yeah, it's just, it's just not good timing with all the other entities with, you know, levies going on and, and the state funding, that's not happening, so it's, it, what, what the state has said is, the schools and us, we have the potential to generate more income, so it's on us to do that. But they're still taking what they've been taking and not sharing it where they're supposed to, so it's coming down to us to, we have to decide.
So there's no real good decision here?
When it comes to taxes, nobody wants to raise them, so, yeah, so.
No, I mean, that's.
Yeah. And, you know, and you don't, you know, you used to be able to deduct real estate taxes on your income taxes, and, you know, that's all gone now, so.
The other difference between the property tax and the income tax, property tax, it doesn't separate the difference between people on fixed incomes.
No.
Senior citizens.
It would apply to.
It just applies to the property.
Each property, yes.
And.
Yeah, an income tax, we do not tax retirement income. We tax earned income, you know, rental income, sole proprietor business, gambling, lottery
And then critically, if the school is successful, do, are the people really going to want to absorb another 5 mil on top of it?
Yeah.
And then.
I guess it depends on how, how, how much of a cushion it passes by, if it does pass.
Well, if it passes, yeah. And then if it doesn't pass.
Yeah.
What's that say about our chances?
Right.
I mean, the only thing I would say is, what does it say about our chances? The difference is, and this is what I would anticipate hearing from a lot of older residents in my ward, they depend on police, you know, everybody depends on police and fire, they're no longer involved with the schools, they don't have students in the district. I think they would, you know, I would hope that when it comes time to support the police and fire, they would consider, you know, voting for that, because they want that service. They, I mean, we just were awarded some type of, it just was on social media, about another recognition the city got for being a great place to live. Well, you're, you're a great place because of police and fire also.
You know, and politically, I mean, there's a lot of things we can talk about, which, that makes sense, what you're saying. There may be other ways we could sell it also, but I, probably what we have to look at is what's best for the city in the long term, because once we do this, you know, it's going to be tough to come back in another five years and say we need something else.
Not necessarily, I just, I guess a little counter to that is, you know, with all the builds going on, this place is going to look a lot different in five years. And I, a point to all, I guess, to, of all this is, you know, do we look at something? I mean, we are still financially in good shape, you know, let's put that out there. This isn't like an emergency situation, but we are looking at here in a couple of years, if we don't do anything, then it could turn into that. In, you know, something in five years, if we do have to, you know, if whoever's up here has to come and do that, things could potentially be a lot different. I mean, we're, you know, you just, I, you know, I added them up, I think, yeah, 700, just with these here, of the five units that are either in, in build or potential right now, I mean, that's 740 units. That doesn't count, you know, a few other potential ones as well. And I'm just kind of playing a little bit of devil's advocate here as well, that, you know, a lot could change in five years in, in that time period, and, I mean, maybe it's an, it's another kind of adjustment. You know, we're, I mean, looking at some things here of doing like a, you know, if we went with 2.5% income tax, 100% credit, you know, that's, that's an adjustment, and I think a lot of people would be happy with that, because the biggest complaint that seemed about was the 50% credit, so, you know, and I'm just.
That's a great point.
Kind of throwing that out there, you know, just as, but, yes, I do agree with you on, on, on what you're saying as well.
That's a good point, because, you know, with 700 properties coming in, that is going to be more needed resources for police and fire. I mean.
Yeah.
I would imagine, chief, what would you say? How many extra officers would, you need three?
Don't ask him that.
Full-time? I mean, these are things we need to know. So then what about staffing for the fire department? Would they be, how many extra?
I would imagine they'd have to add two. I, I mean, the more properties, I mean, more calls for service.
Exactly.
The cost is naturally going up, anywhere from 2% to 3% every year, as you're developing everything, that's more streets to patrol with more calls for service.
And three officers would be about how much a year?
Honestly, about 318,000.
318, okay. I was going to say.
That's what benefits me.
Okay.
It usually runs about 106,000.
So then for the fire department, let's just say then, those five individuals would be about a half million dollars.
Altogether, yeah.
Okay. And that doesn't, I mean, that seems like low-end staffing for an extra 700 properties. That doesn't seem.
And Kenny, I don't think our problem is in rational justification as to why we need this. I think our problem is going to be in irrational, irrational electorate that just sees us raising taxes and doesn't stop to listen to the reasons why. And that's, I, I think that's more, more an issue. If it weren't for the school levy, I, I, I may not believe that, but, you know, the school levy's really.
Yeah.
Really going to cause problems for us.
Yeah. You'll know the result in a month.
Yeah. So Kevin, let me ask you this question, then, and again, I'm not advocating, I'm simply asking, so I know what our options are. Your chart is absolutely horrifying, as how much money we are losing. Would we have to put it on the November ballot? And I, I know from your standpoint, yeah, because you want to have as much available as possible in the future.
To start collecting it as soon as possible, yes.
But if politically, that did not seem like the right decision to make, could we wait until 24?
It would be March of 2024.
I'm, you're, I stand corrected. It's good, it's good to have you on.
I do know for the, you know, November, you'd have to, we have to make decision, you know, have everything down by August 9th.
Otherwise, we'd have to have it down by December.
Yeah.
No, I understand when we have to have that filed, but the question is, could we sustain six months, so it's not on the November ballot?
It, like I said, you know, looking at where we're projected to end 2024, I mean, it puts us on a very slippery slope.
It does.
But you think if the school levy fails in March, it's going to be on November?
Yeah, so I would assume, yeah.
Well, that, that, that's why I'm asking the question, because I don't think, that would, I think that's the worst possible situation for us.
I just, I, I get what you're saying about, I understood and appreciate what you said, but I would have to say, the school levy is Inglewood, Union, Phillipsburg, Clayton. Our police and fire will just be Clayton. I mean, we can analyze what the results are after the election by precinct to see how Clayton showed up, but when you, just the school, the school levy is so different, because a lot of the noise that you hear isn't Clayton residents, they're Inglewood and Union, Phillipsburg. So I, I still would say, and I, I love what you said and I appreciate it, I would just say, when it comes to Clayton residents saying, "We have an amazing police and fire," I feel like Clayton residents would continue to back that, and there's less noise that's going to combat that from our residents.
Putting a lot of information out there, because that's what people want nowadays. I mean, you know, with, we've added the body cameras, that costs money. The training for police and fire costs money, and then service, they've been doing, you know, ditch training and, and equipment that we've been using, it was old and we've had to buy new, so.
And it costs money, but then you look at the response times, where it's down to like.
Yeah.
Less than two minutes. You, if you're having a heart attack, that's the type of response time you want. Do you want to live in a community where it takes five minutes and your chance of surviving is null?
Well, you're going back to Clayton.
Well, you're going back to Clayton or Inglewood and Union when you're talking about that too, Kenny.
Well, yes.
Because the fire department is all three cities.
Yes, but I think we would use the stats that Chief has presented us because those stats would stay the same.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, it's still the response time, yeah.
And I, and I hear what you're saying. And I think now we're talking about the political aspects of this. So politically, I see that as certainly a two edged sword. So if we have saved as much money as, as what the chief says we've saved, and I think we have, by this cooperative effort, why do we need the, the levy to begin with? And second, I don't know that that's going to be the focus of this. I think the focus is going to be Meadowbrook by those people out there who are, have been anti-Meadowbrook from the very beginning. And we're going to have to educate them as to the significance of all that. I mean, it, I think it's all doable if, if we, if we approach it correctly, but it's a very, it's a very tight rope for us to walk.
Yeah. If you look at the transfers we make, like last year, the police was 760,000, fire was 670, and the service was 892,000. I mean, those amounts are, are way larger than what we're utilizing at Meadowbrook.
Yeah. Before you walked in, he told us that Meadowbrook transfers were about 210,000.
Lost. Since 15, 15?
Only had it one under Elaine though. Isn't that right Elaine?
So that's over a million dollars. That's how they're going to look at it. Even though on our budget, it doesn't, it doesn't go there, but that's how they're going to look at it. There's your million, you know, just get rid of Meadowbrook. So one of the things, if we do this, no matter which way we go, I think we're going to have to be prepared to deal with the Meadowbrook issue, which would also mean, if we, let's say we just shut down Meadowbrook tomorrow, we're still going to have to pay maintenance on Meadowbrook. And we're still going to have to do all the other things on Meadowbrook, which Kevin, I hate to have you.
No, we don't pay.
But, but no matter what we do, that, that may be something that we may be prepared to. Two, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be dominating this conversation. Do you have, well, no, I guess I mean to be asking these questions. I just don't mean to be the only one asking these questions. Do you have a recommendation as to whether you prefer the property tax approach or the income tax approach?
Looking at, you know, the millage you would need for property tax, I know income tax is, you know, it's going up, you know, maybe another percent, but just with the property tax being stifled, that's, that's the most you're going to collect, that you're going to have another issue, you know, and then hopefully with the income tax, you, you go build off that and we get the new, new residents in here. And then hopefully we get new businesses. We're getting the, the two and a half or two off of the workers there all coming to us. I, I see that as an upside. And then again, it, like it says, it doesn't affect the, the retired community. So, I mean.
I would agree with, I would agree with Mr. Schweitzer that the income tax is probably the best way for the city council to move forward, if city council decides that they want to move forward. And not only that, that we don't tax the elderly, those on a fixed income, but it's also, the fire chief actually made a very good point. It's a forgivable tax as well. So if I'm unemployed, I'm not paying that tax, but I would be paying taxes still on my property.
We're not here tonight to make that decision, right Amanda?
No.
This is just to review revenue streams.
Throw it in your lap.
So the 2% with the 100% credit would bring in 5.9 million. What'd you say?
I think that that only breaks even.
That's what I meant. That's what I was getting to. So I didn't, what else were you guys saying? I couldn't. With, okay. But then like you were saying, that people that are upset about Meadowbrook would be getting their credit back.
Did I say that?
Well, you were, you know, you know, the people that were upset about Meadowbrook are also upset that they lost their credit.
Yeah, they're paying .75.
Same people.
No. Politically, the, we would, if we raised that, you'd be looking at, going back to the 100% credit. That, that would, may help pass that.
And then that we could, would we say that it's for police and fire? Could we say it's, Martina, could we say it's for police, fire and service?
Yeah.
Would that be like, what are your guys' thoughts on that? Police, fire and service? Or Amanda, yours also?
Well, my question is, if, if we say it's police, fire and service for the 2.25, can it only go to police, fire and service? Or would we need to do what we have similar now where we say a third of it goes to CIP? If we say this amount would go to police and fire and the rest would go to general fund, and then we could transfer to, to wherever we need to go? That's all I want to interject there.
What are your thoughts on that?
You know, the property tax, I know it would definitely go to that specific fund. Income tax, I'd have to make sure before, you know, want to tell you anything, but I don't know if it's dependent on how we write the ballot language or if it's required to go there. So I could definitely get that information, get it back to you guys.
Yeah, I, I'm going to guess, but I think it's how we write the ballot language.
Yeah. So you can say it'd be used for that, but it might be deposited in general fund or a percentage going to the other funds.
You know, police and fire up to a certain point.
Yeah.
How Amanda said, like one third, one third, or we could break it down to fourths or whatever.
I guess I'd just be cautious about getting really, really specific. As soon as you start making this specifics, then you're locked in and you can't change it. I mean, if you say operations, if you say operations versus police, fire or service, then it may be that you end up.
Yeah.
If something else comes up, you can't divert something to pay for or something in addition.
Right. And if you'll remember with the budget for this year, you know, even though we knew that this was coming down the pike, we didn't stop the capital projects that we had planned because the money was already in the capital fund. We couldn't transfer it back out to the general fund. And that's why, you know, we could say, oh, we can cut all the projects in capital, but it had no bearing on the general fund.
I just, I guess I would say, I would want us to, I would want us to be able to message it, walking that tight rope of police and fire. That's what we're using this for.
And then with the.
I'm sure we can do the research on that to make sure that we do whatever is required for us to give that message appropriately.
And with, with the CIP, that's where, that's where we purchased all the police cruisers, the medics, fire engines, the service vehicles. Those all come out of CIP. So basically it's just truly operations for those funds we're talking about.
Kenny, I agree with you. I think we can figure out how to message that.
Yeah, it's going to be information for sure. Unless you want to sit here and stare at me, that's all I have, so.
Do you have any other good stuff to tell us?
Any other questions or comments?
Can I get back to, to one more issue? Just because I'm not sure in my mind. What you're telling us is that it would be best to do it in November because if you don't, we're facing uncertainties for the future.
Because if you go, if you do it in March.
Right.
And it fails, then.
You can't put it back on until November.
Until November, right.
So then, yeah.
Politically, we have to decide what happens and we may not have that ability to do until after May.
Right.
Until after the primary. Okay.
I knew we closed the workshop.
Greg has one more comment.
Look at the income tax that's been collected, you know, for 2022, you have 5.4 million. Is there estimates that you can give that you might be able to project out for what might be seen for 2023 and possibly 2024? Based on the current numbers?
Yeah, I mean, just what I budgeted, you know, in the 2023 budget, there was a small increase, just because, you know, trying to, 2028, you know, the pandemic, everything kind of threw a wrench in everything to see where we're going. I did do a small increase in income taxes. So we might be closer to like 5.9, I think, 5.7, something like that million. Just trying to be conservative because I don't want, you know, just shoot up the revenues so we increase our budget and spend money we don't have. So we should be getting, I'll be getting some more numbers here. We got to make, file with the state, you know, what we've collected last year. And so I did notice, you know, we're 20, 23% through when I was doing the revenue report for tonight, going through where we're at this year, we're kind of behind right now. But usually, once we get, start getting the filings from everyone's end of returns, we, we bump up. So then I'll have a better clue how we're looking. So again, after getting into May, I'll, I'll know how our collections are looking.
Has the Ohio Municipal League released information on how, how spell one would negatively impact us?
I haven't seen anything about how it'll negatively impact us yet. They have released information on what it is in the legislative update.
I don't think that'll be beneficial to us.
No.
No, it will not.
I think they've sent information against it, so.
I, I knew that they had advocated against it. Maybe if you could reach out to Kent to like give us some type of idea, I guess that's, if that is a priority bill for them that they want to pass, that's even more of a cut we're going to be getting from the property tax side of.
Yeah.
Things. And that's thing, that's information we need to consider because.
Because I think that affects your homestead and rollback.
And 1.9 million might not even be close to enough.
Right.
Why can't we get Phil Plummer here to kind of explain some of this stuff to us?
I'd be happy to ask him.
If you could invite him and Representative Creach to the next meeting, I think that'd be helpful. Because since they both represent Clayton.
Couldn't hurt. Let me, let me, let me ask this other question. So what if, what if we don't eliminate the 50%? And people like me still have to pay taxes in Clayton? I've had a pretty good year so far, but it's not that good.
So depending on how, how much you raise it, you're going to be raising that amount that they have. So if you went to 2% with 50% credit, people are going to be paying 1%. Now it's at the .75, so you'll see an increase there, plus the increase in the, in a half a percent from 1.5 to 2. But yeah.
Overall, it's a less percent increase than what you'd have to do if you eliminated it. Because then people like me.
It depends on, yeah.
Pay nothing.
Yeah.
So the others have to make up for what I don't pay.
Right.
Now, I know we, we did that without a vote, you know, when we did the 50%.
Going to the voters, yes.
Right. Other than the social media where you see some vocal people that are opposed to it, I, I would be really curious as to, as to what the general population of Clayton feels about that. You know, I, I know we can't really do polling, but.
Yeah, you just be, if you did, it would be the social media people that you're talking about.
Well, if you do it that way, yeah. I mean, if you do a legitimate poll, it wouldn't be, but, but I, I don't know. It's just something to ponder that I, I don't know, other, other than people that work outside of, those people that work inside Clayton, I haven't heard any of them complain about that. But I don't know, I, I don't know how many that is numerically within the city that vote. And, I mean, do you understand what I'm saying?
And we have, you know, we have individuals that pay the 1.5 that work in Clayton, that don't live in Clayton. So, so, you know, that we, that's why I said that withholdings is a big, big amount we get from the income tax.
So it seems like what we're doing is we're putting all the burden now on people that work in Clayton and live in Clayton, as opposed to those that live in Clayton and work outside of Clayton. And.
But your burden is the city of Dayton.
Yeah, but I still pay, I, I still pay for Clayton. I mean, I still use Clayton roads. I still use Clayton services. And, and that's the thing, that's why I didn't, I, I didn't mind doing that because I still use all these services. And I'm not saying that's a selling point because not many people listened to what I had to say about it. But it's, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just weighing all our options.
A lot of factors, yeah.
And our increase would have to be less overall. Instead of going to 2.25%, we could go to, what, 1.75 with, with maintaining the 50? So it's like a .25% increase for both, for what would amount to both of them, as opposed to a jump up to 2.25 from 1.5. And that burden falls only on the people that work and live in Clayton. I'm just thinking out loud. Stuff to, to think about.
That's not to just be in debate and countering you all night here, but I mean, the things you're saying, that's kind of just the reality of things. If you look up at the chart that's up there, there's two municipalities that give any kind of credit up there, us and Springfield. I mean, yeah, it's the same thing, you know, I mean, I work up in Troy now, but in prior working in Dayton, so paying the same, same tax rate that you did, you know, the highest percentage of my local income tax was going to somewhere that really technically I didn't have a voice in. Because, and that's just, that's the reality of the system, is what I'm saying. You know, I do, I do think we do have a higher, a good percentage of, of residents who believe in the city and the community that they live in. And I think that's why up to this point, you know, asking them to pay a 50% credit on here has stable, has, has stayed. But it just, I'm just kind of pointing out, that's just the reality of, of how government is here, is that income tax for all those here, how many people, I know people who work in probably a lot of those municipalities who don't live in those particular ones. You know, it's just kind of the case, how it is. And maybe that's what we need to get. You know, maybe that's a case for us to go to a higher rate and 100% credit. Because it's, it's kind of getting on par, you know, just with how things are.
And Brendan, I don't disagree with that. I'm just raising these all, I haven't taken a position on it yet. I'm just trying to figure, it would be better, a lower rate increase, keeping the 50% or a higher rate increase and eliminating the 50%?
And I, yeah.
And those are all, I mean, those are good arguments for the second, but.
I think this has been a really healthy conversation and discussion. I would have to say, when we think of it passing though, the people that have been so aggravated that they didn't get the 100% credit, they're now getting it back and supporting the police and fire potentially.
Assuming they would do that, yeah.
And that's the thing, assuming they would do that, but.
They probably would because they don't have to pay the tax.
Exactly.
I have one more question, just for clarification. So on the property tax issue, the, did you say that even if the property tax, even if the property values raised were only, were still capped at a certain dollar amount or a percentage of that?
Yeah, that's what I said, like on the, on the example I had. You look at that, that taxable value, that's for the whole city is 216 million. Take that times the 3.5 mils and divide it by 1,000. That's, that's the formula they use. So, you know, like that 719,000, that's going to be the most we're going to collect. If property values go up, they use reduction factors to bring it down. That's why you, when you see, you know, we got, we might have 20, 20 mils out there on levies, but when you look to the effective rate, which is our millage minus reduction factors, we're at like 13, you know, 13.98%. So they'd use that effective rate because they, they will bring it down with reduction factors because you're maxed out. You can't collect more. Now, if you have new construction or something, some, you, you might collect on that depending on commercial and versus residential. But that's where you're maxed out with these levies.
So I, I really appreciate these numbers that you gave us, things for us to continue to look at. I think a couple after action things that we discussed are Amanda and you potentially reaching out to OML to see how House Bill One is going to negatively impact us. Inviting reps, Plummer and Creach, maybe to the next meeting to have a conversation with them under, to let, so we can let them know why we're against it. And then for maybe the first meeting in May, schedule a 30 minute workshop to analyze the precincts from the May 2 election. Yeah. And I mean, we can just. Yeah, and I mean, we can just thirty minutes look at them and see how Clayton went and have a conversation from that.
And then I'll look into the ballot language as far as fund restrictions.
Anything else for Kevin? Okay, well, thank you, that was very good and very informative, appreciate that. So we'll take like a, maybe just a couple of.
Oh, yeah. We close the workshop.
Second.